Testing one, two, three. This will be the October 4th, 2017 City Council Workshop Meeting, followed by the regular meeting. Ready?
Ready, okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a City Council Workshop Meeting on October 4th, 2017, approximately 6:50 PM, and it's for the interview of board applicant. So, this is very painful. Nancy?
Guess you can figure that out.
I got you. Go sit up over here and, just, real simple, just tell us a little bit about yourself, and, you know, the board here, the council will ask you a couple of questions, and we'll make sure it's very quick.
Okay. I've been a resident of Satellite Beach 25 years. I just recently retired from teaching, elementary school. I'm not sure where I'm going next. I'm kinda letting time go by and see where I want to go next, but I wanted to definitely do some service, and this seemed like a good place to start.
Great. I'll ask you a question. Because you're retired, then the Beautification Board, I don't think they meet on Fridays, mornings?
That works for me.
Is that...
That works for me.
Works for you, okay. Start with questions.
Okay. Well, that one was easy.
I just want to thank you for volunteering. I was the liaison to that board for, I think, the first seven years I was on council, and it's a great board.
Oh, good.
So, I think you'll enjoy it, and I'm grateful that you're volunteering to sit on it.
Thank you.
Nancy, just my usual question. I know you're interested in the Beautification Board, so this is kind of an easy question. What do you, just off the top of your head, what do you see that we could work on beautification-wise? What do you see as some of the issues that you might, may have already been dealt with, but something you have an interest in? What do you...
So, I'm a walker.
Okay.
And I see some things when I'm walking that I see that could be worked on, and I'm not really sure of the charter of the board. I don't know if it includes some of the environmental aspects, so walking, seeing storm drains with trash in them, and I think there's an overlap there, so that's off the top of my head.
Okay. That's a good answer, thank you. That's all right.
I really don't have any questions. Again, thank you for volunteering. I, like Dominic, I was actually a liaison to that board for a long time. It is a great, great group of people, very smart people. I learned a lot about the plants and the stuff that we use around here, so if nothing else, I found it to be a really good education from that. So, I think you'll really enjoy that.
It would be nice to work with not eight-year-olds all day.
Yes, yes.
Excited about that.
You missed a 1 percent rate. Sorry.
I heard! In seven days, I'm okay.
Where did you...
I was up on Merritt Island.
Okay. So, great. Any other questions? Here's how we do it. It's an agenda item. You're welcome to stay through our meeting if you would like. If not, we'll contact you.
Yeah, I'm probably gonna scoot.
Great. It's an agenda item. We vote on it.
Right.
But thank you very much for...
Lenora filled me in, that she would let me know tomorrow what's going...
Lenora will definitely take care of you.
Okay.
Okay? And thank you very much for participating in our city.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. I think that's the end.
Thank you all for all of your...
Yes. Thank you very much. That is, no more applicants tonight, so we'll close. Special meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a City Council Regular Meeting, October 4th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Osmer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item Three. We have a couple of proclamations. I'll start on the first one, and then council and Osmer will do the light. The first one tonight is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please, come up. Also, before we start that, the fire department here has a fundraiser, and t-shirts, and they have their new t-shirts. This isn't the new one, this is the old design? This is the new one here. Available for your orders through City Hall. The information is up here. If you please help out and donate, get yourself a t-shirt. Thank you.
Ninth month.
Best month of the season. Whereas, breast cancer is one of the most common cancers diagnosed in the United States. One in 200,000 women, one out of every eight, will be diagnosed as breast cancer this year. And whereas, understanding the risk factors associated with this illness is essential to prevention, older women and those with a personal or family history of breast cancer are at great risk of developing the illness. And whereas, breast cancer is an unpredictable disease with no exact cause, however, learning more about the symptoms, and diagnosis, and getting mammogram screens can help with early detection, which is critical to prevention. And, which is critical to prevention. And whereas, American Cancer Society raises money for educational programs, and the Susan G. Coleman Foundation raises money for research and early detection. And whereas, coming together as a community to support mothers, daughters, sisters, and involving others who have been implicated can, we can all strive to inspire and strengthen the cause through education, or through education and research to find a cure to ensure future free from this illness. And whereas, the pink ribbon is the most prominent symbol of breast cancer awareness, and is most, and in most countries, the month of October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The fight for the cure is a never-ending challenge that will one day save the lives of many people. Now, therefore, I, Frank P. Castillo, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, of Brevard County, Florida, to hereby proclaim October 2017 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And to our fire department here, and all your work you do, thank you very, very much. And all you do for the, you know, the nation and running, really, really well. Thank you very much. And... Very good.
If I can have one of the things from the library here, please? Come on. Yes, I wish it was a lovely lady. First, I would like to start by saying is, I started out as a liaison to the library board. I'm not much of a library guy, never have been, but I can tell you, this has been one of the most enjoyable boards I have ever worked with. You guys are great, and I've learned some, I've, I go off my record, my, every time I go home from a meeting, how it went, how things went, so I really enjoy being here and appreciate all that you do. So, starting with the proclamation, it reads, whereas, Friends of Satellite Beach Library raised money that enabled our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, special events throughout the year. And whereas, the work of the Friends highlights an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of our community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of life-long learning, and connecting with the thoughts and ideas of others from the ages past to present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of wealth-funded libraries, and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with the expert assistance, research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas, the Friends' gift of their time committed to the library sets an example for all on how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and development of the community. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Mayor, Frank P. Castillo, if I do hear, I claim October 15th through 21st, 2017, as National Friends of Libraries Week, the City Council orders everyone to join the Friends of the Satellite Beach Library, and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. Thank you all.
Here, I can take it.
Still trying to...
Thank you.
A year ago, we had enormous amount of damage to our back porch. Finally, making headway when getting it done. We'll have to come over and see what's all that is, but...
Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, which is Citizens' Comments for Non-Agenda Item. The floor is open. Please.
Counsel, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. I was here last month, as you remember, talking about the property of the old Peglegs. Mrs. Parker's been kind enough to provide me with additional information, and I appreciate that. Of course, that brings more questions. I, there's... Is this a done deal? Is this a signed contract, and I'm wasting my breath, or is there still open for consideration?
Well, at this time, we're in the process with an agreement, working on the agreement with the, this particular contract, let's say, contract, okay?
Okay. So, hopefully, hopefully, it's not a done...
I'll let you make this goes on this comment, one second. You present your name, because it's Citizens' Comments?
Yes, sir.
We'll tell you, and then, if you would like to meet with Courtney and I on it, we'll be more than happy.
Okay.
Under Citizens' Comments, generally, we're not...
All right.
I don't want to cut you off and not let you have a say...
Yes, sir.
...at some point, so please present it, and I'll tell you what I...
I'm learning the rules. I appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
So, Mrs. Parker informed me that you had an offer that was close to the purchase price. Unfortunately, it's for a gas station, which is a high-traffic business on a high-traffic highway. A1A is the main corridor through Satellite Beach. And I don't understand this consider, this over-consideration of $1 million to the nearby residents. It's kind of like building a house near an airport and then complaining about the airport. So, we have a million, almost a million and a half dollar offer that was presented to the city and declined because we didn't like the type of business it is. So, we're willing to take a million-dollar loss on this, plus lost property taxes over the last 10 years. In addition, going through some of the past minutes, this is from the CRA, we're concerned about this new bill that might double the homestead exemption, and the potential loss of over $600,000 in revenue to the city. So, at the same time, we're willing to pass up almost a $1.5 million offer on this property while we have a potential shortfall or reduction in revenue of over $600,000. That doesn't make much sense to me, all right? And I hope it doesn't make much sense to many people. Yeah, I just don't understand why we're not taking the highest offer.
Okay. Let me explain the process going back 2002.
Two.
Okay. Unfortunately, it's not a 401K, okay? We, this was not done by just council, this was done by the CRA Citizens Advisory Committee. When we formed the CRA, in which that piece of property is in that district, okay? We were looking for what would be compatible in our, things that would be compatible in our city, okay? When the, when that particular property came to the Citizen, CRA Advisory Committee, okay? With, contract, they wanted to put a gas station, it needed to come before that committee. That committee vetted that particular property to residents, and I can assure you that that advisory committee held meetings on it, and it was packed. Mike, I can tell you, it was overwhelming not to be a gas station, not by just people who lived right there, but the general people who lived in town, the rest of the town, were there.
May I interject a little?
No, let me finish, one second, and then I'll, we'll come to an agreement of how to handle this from here forward. So, it was not compatible with the vision of the CRA. Now, you've got to learn a little bit about CRAs, such as Downtown Cocoa, Melbourne, they have a vision. Other CRAs have actually given property away to developers, so they get projects and so forth started. So, at that time, our only way of stopping a project such as a gas station was for us to acquire the property, okay? So, at that time, the CRA advisory, Citizens Advisory, came to us and said, here's what we feel needs to be done. We need to buy the property, because that's the only way we can stop the project. So, through the process, we acquired the piece of property. Over the years, we've had offers, and unfortunately, we are, we want to have compatibility on that site. The price of the land, which I have learned through Courtney and the realtor, that the value of that piece of property, real only will bring us close to that particular dollar figure if it's a gas station in that, and that's not compatible to the CRA plan. And so, therefore, we've decided as the CRA and council that we were going to make sure that what went in that particular area was compatible, okay?
Yeah.
And that's where we stand. Courtney?
I just want to sum it up a little bit. They started this process in 2002, well before I got here. I remember reading in the newspaper, and I remember coming to some of the meetings. They, this was packed, there were a lot of people involved. So, from 2002 until 2017, that's over 10 years of discussion and vetting of whether they're going to include, of what type of property they want, and, you know, what type of development they want. For over 10 years, it's been decided that they were going to go after a mixed-use residential slash commercial office-type project. In the past four years, they were looking at new parking spaces for the park across the street to be able to have overflow parking. So, so what you're asking them to do by, by going and looking at a gas station, would be going back and throwing out 15 years of decisions and community participation, why they bought the property in the first place, you'd be asking them to throw away public parking options, and we would be going back on a contract that we already signed. The only thing that's left is to do a developer's agreement, is literally to negotiate a developer's agreement for a project they've already approved. So, that, that's, I'm just, you asked if you're too late, and I just want to give you where you're at.
I appreciate that. But was part of the vetting process the potential to lose over $1 million on the property? Was it brought to the citizens that, hey, we might lose a million, we might give this 1.5 million away?
In the world of, in the world of real estate, many people here in this, in this city lost their shirts when they went through a recession. There are many people who lost value on their properties. In fact, I don't think there was anyone in Brevard County that didn't lose value on their property. We lost value on that property, just like every other commercial developer, every other residential developer lost value on their property.
But you yourself have said there's been an offer of almost $1.5 million, so I don't understand the loss of value.
Because it was for a use that they don't want. So, if a developer is going to purchase a property, and it's for a use that they can't put on their property, then it has no value to them. So, this offer was no value to us, because it did not have the, not have the development they wanted.
But again, I'm concerned that part of the vetting process and the discussions did not include the loss of $1 million.
Like I said, we don't consider that a loss, because the value of the property isn't there for the use that the city bought it for.
But I, as a taxpayer, see it as a loss. We can't control real estate markets and what are the values of it. There's another value to it, and that's the value to the community, that the community gets what they want on the particular piece of property within the CRA.
So, we can, we can meet with you?
I'd be more than happy...
Well, I like the public venue, because a lot of these people are unaware. I talked with a couple at the last meeting, and they were totally unaware.
Those people who talked to me after meeting, and Harry Pollak, who was the gentleman you talked to?
Yes, sir.
He is very happy with what's going there. You've got to realize, that piece of property had a restaurant on it, and also had...
Apartments.
Apartments on it.
Yes.
So, we're really not far from what it was on there. It's an upscale of what was, which seems to be more compatible to the vision of the CRA. But since it's citizen council, now, here's what I'm going to do.
Because you declined an $800,000 offer for a restaurant.
Yeah, sure, because that's not...
It had a drive-through.
But it had a restaurant.
It's a drive-through, Mike. Okay. So, listen, here's what we need to do with this, because it's Citizens' Comments, is I'd be more than happy to set up a meeting with Courtney and myself, if you would like to do that.
Well, I appreciate that, but you and Courtney have kind of dominated the comments section of this program, so I think you just don't like somebody coming up here and challenging this decision.
We're not, you're not challenging us. We're more than happy to sit with you and talk. Under this particular portion of our meeting, it's Citizens' Comments.
It's not a debate, okay? So, he turned it into a debate, not I.
I told you that I would explain to you how we got there, okay? And that if you wanted to meet with us and discuss it, then we'll be more than happy to set up a meeting.
Don't think it needs to be vetted in the public.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just have a quick question for you, maybe for the, not for... Is it possible that with the use that we have putting in there now, being that there's going to be residential, commercial, that the potential tax revenues will be higher than if it were just simply a gas station, since we have more sources of tax money coming in from the individual units' property values than from...
There may be. There may be. Gas stations are a high-value, you know, property, but just because they're, they, you can't have enough of them, honestly. I mean, so, you know, you look over at, you know, with the Wawa on the corner of Poinita, it's in a terrible location, and we all have to recognize that, but everybody, it's packed all the time, because it's, you know, it's Wawa. So, we could have...
Mike, 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 no, it's not a discussion.
So, so, yes, we, in my opinion, the taxes would probably be around the same or more for a gas station, because it's just, that's, that's the value. But the, it's like we're comparing apples and oranges. The city bought the property specifically for, to, to, to take the impact of the use and make it compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Drive-throughs, and, you know, if you look at the comments from residents when they saw the development that we're putting in, most of their concerns were size, traffic, is all the traffic going to go onto Soto? You know, is this going to increase our inability to get across the street to go to the beach? You know, traffic is a big issue. Well, drive-throughs and gas stations are a tremendous traffic generator. They actually generate very similar traffic volumes to much larger-scale residential apartment buildings, not condos, apartment buildings, just because of the volume that people are in and out constantly. So, you know, we have to keep that in mind. And we also wanted parking spaces. Parking spaces right there, we basically locked up a portion of their property forever. I mean, we're, those parking spaces are going to be locked into an easement. We will always have access to them, and, and so we basically took part of that property. So, that has a value to that, and so that's why, you know, instead of 800,000, it went down to 500,000, because we took part of their property with that, with that request. So, that's, you know, there's, there's all kinds of issues that are working into what that dollar amount was set for and why. It's lower val, we get a, we're selling it for a lower value, because we're wanting a development type that's a higher risk to build here in the city. And that's what CRAs do, that you want a specific type of development to attract to your community. If the market's not doing it for you on their own, you help them by providing that incentive of property, and portions of that property. So, that's what we did here, and it's no different than any other CRA in any other part of the state of Florida.
Thank you. So, at this, again, I'll make that offer to you, if you'd like to meet.
I'm okay with you.
Please get me, thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda I, excuse me, Citizens' Comments still open for non-agenda items? If there are no further, bring it back to Agenda Item Five, which is City Council Comments. Mark?
Mike, I want, you asked for some input. I remember that one of the times you got up and spoke, you said, who was on council at the time that this was all, went through? A couple of us, I think Frank and Dominic and I raised our hands. I was, I was intimately involved in this whole process, and I think it would help if I just take a minute of council's time to kind of step back and tell you how this developed, how it went through, because if we...
I understand, Mike. I'm just wondering if it's a good decision?
Mike?
Okay, then I'm done talking, because you ain't listening, sport. So, I'm done. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Counsel?
I would just like to comment, obviously, on the rain that we had, and the rain we're probably still about to get, that was in there, only because I did get bombarded with phone calls till about 11:30 that evening. And actually, on the good side of it was, I didn't really have any complaints about the roads flooded, there's lots of water out there, the water's in the yard, all those type of things. I think everybody has, since Fay, we all understand, there's just a lot of water, and it's going to take a while for it to drain, and I, everybody I spoke to was perfectly okay with that. The only issues that, that people brought up were the people that were riding up and down the streets.
Yes.
People that were doing Facebook Live, riding up and down South Patrick and DeSoto. I particularly know, I had two neighbors that were, you know, calling me constantly because every time a car came down the street, water was rushing into their garage, and they were trying to lift everything up. And then I had a couple that said, as much as we love Satellite Beach Police Department, and we do love Satellite Beach Police Department, they said, with the course of about three hours and the height of all that, they came down Cinnamon seven times. And I said, I think we only had 15 cars, but seven of them were Satellite Beach Police cars. And every time they were coming down the street, the wake, and I'll give them credit, because they did drive a lot slower than some of those trucks and others that were coming down there. So, that was the biggest thing, again, was, was wakes. Again, the water, I didn't really have any issues with the water, and for the most part of all, it went away within hours after it was over with. But that was the biggest thing I got, and the people were asking, why don't we do like some of the other cities do, and put a barricade at the end of the street, at the end of the block, just...
Because Cinnamon wasn't the only one flooded.
I, I get that.
I have to say, every road in this city was two to three feet of water.
So, the questions I got is, so, if the city doesn't do anything...
Oh, we were out. We were preventing people from going down Cinnamon.
Well, that's what I said, if they don't do anything, that, this is quote-unquote how I heard. If the city doesn't do anything to stop people from diving down the street, what liability do they have for allowing cars to push water into my house? Because they know it's an issue, and I'm, again, I'm just kind of bringing forth what was brought to me, and I said, 11:39, I was still getting phone calls and getting hammered.
I mean, I put a Facebook message out. We're getting, we, we were, I just watched the weather just right before I came here to start preparing for the next week, and we'll be meeting with PD and Fire and Public Works to talk about how we're, we're going to message the community to just not drive, because that is a problem. We put out a message, I think that helped quite a bit on Facebook, for people to understand that, that does happen, if you, you know. Luckily, Brevard County Emergency Management also picked that up, and they did the same thing, and so did the City of Melbourne and so on, it just kind of trickled down. But there, there is no liability on our part for other people's stupid actions. I mean, we don't, we don't own other people's minds.
Right.
So, there's no, and it's a public right-of-way, they still have a right to drive down it, especially if they live there, and that's the problem with barricading anything, because they, you know... they, you know, people start to get home. So people will drive down.
And I did see that, where they said is they actually just put a barricade in middle of the road, residents actually would still go around it and go to their house. But as I, I mean, literally, we had people stand, neighbors standing out there, watching the cars, watching where they turned on, watched where they went. Many cars would go down and then they actually would turn towards Cassia, but none of them stopped, for my street, no one stopped in a 500-block of Cinnamon.
And they probably, they might have been avoiding Cassia.
Well, and, and I, and I...
Because Cassia looked exactly the same way.
And I'm sure, I'm sure probably did, because I did hear people talk about Cassia also. But like I said, those, those were the concerns that I was, I was getting. I think DeSoto was the other one that I heard.
Roosevelt was under two to three feet of water. I mean, there wasn't a road that wasn't affected severely. Jackson and I think the Community Center, the water was up to the sidewalk again, it looked just like Irma.
Right.
And in some areas, I could say it was worse. So...
And that was true for me. I didn't have that much water during Irma.
Right.
I mean, I, literally, my truck tires were sitting in, in water that were out there.
The river's so full that it's now backing into the, you know...
I think, I think the concern, the drift that I was getting, though, is, and I think you're right, I think the residents stayed put, because all the residents I knew were home watching their houses flooding out. What I was hearing is, and people were seeing the Facebook Live and stuff like that, we think it was just people that weren't residents here that were just riding around because they wanted to go see the floodwaters. You've got guys in big trucks that just wanted a ride around in the deep water. And I, again, those are just the concerns that I heard. I thought I would make sure I relayed those because, like I said, people said, make sure that I said something about her, that I brought that, or brought that to your attention, so...
But we know.
And I, and I don't complain about our Public Works guys, even though they see me standing out there cleaning the ditch out at the end of the street. It benefits me, so I'm more than happy to clean it out.
And thank you, because how many outlets do we have?
There's 700 and something.
Right. There's, it's impossible for us to do that during a storm. Impossible. And we do it as much as we can, but we have 700.
I get that.
There's no way. After the storm, we went and cleaned up, we cleaned up all of them, basically.
And, and I think the water, exactly, after it stopped, it drained well. I mean, I left it four hours, four hours after midnight, and the streets were pretty much dry with the exception of my car.
The other issue is people's debris is still out.
That wasn't the issue.
And we've asked people to try to sweep up their gutters. Some people don't. So that water picks it up, and, and that's ultimately what clogs those drains right now. So we have a lot of dry vegetation out there, so it's compounding the problem. But most, for most, for the most part, the, the problem is not clogged drains. Our drains work very well. The reason why we know that is because in the morning, did anybody have flooded streets?
No.
No. So it went down, it's because we had too much water in a short period of time.
Right. And like I said, everybody I spoke to agreed that the drainage was not the problem.
Right. It's, it's just a storm, and the ground is saturated.
Everybody just told me the only issue they had was cars driving. That's the only issue that anybody had, all of the deep water, everybody understood. Like I said, the only thing that people got upset about was cars driving on the street. Other than that...
It's very frustrating. I live on Wilson, it's one of the most flooded streets in the city as well, and I can tell you that, that, that does happen. People get curious and start driving around. But the problem is, is we have, we have, we have enough police officers to address the intersections along South Patrick is where most of the flooding occurs, and, but we even had flooding over on N1A, too. So they were, they were driving around trying to, to get to most spots, but they just couldn't keep up with it. We will not be able to keep up with it again. So I'm just warning everybody, there's no way. It's, it's just, we're going to put, we're, we're working on a message to put out to the public on Facebook. I'm hoping to do a press release, so Denise picks it up to ask people not to drive through the community. There's going to be a lot of street flooding and stuff like that, and we're working with that through the EOC to make sure that the county has a consistent message, countywide.
Thank you. Members?
I'm glad I've got nothing to say.
Thank you.
On a brighter note, I actually attended the Rockledge City Council meeting tonight that started at 6 o'clock, and I got there early, and they actually had a ceremony where they swore on their new police officers. And they did it at, just before their council meeting, like we do interviews. And I thought it was really, I mean, family members of the officers were there, they do it for their police and fire, and I think it's a great idea, and I'm wondering if we can maybe talk to our police chief and fire chief, because, you know, we as council don't get to see our new officers until we see them driving around in a car, and it's like, geez, I wonder who that kid is.
Yeah, we did that in Titusville, too, so, yeah.
So I, I think it's a great idea to, you know, maybe we, we look at doing something like that. I mean, it, it gives their families a chance to understand what they're doing, and it honors them and their families, and it gives us to see their face.
The mayor, the mayor gets introduced to the new...
I'm going to do that. Very nice of him, man.
Is that Austin?
No, I don't know. My wife is trying to get me arrested.
It was probably Austin. He's our new, he's one of our new young police officers, because he delivered the packet to me a couple weeks ago.
After hearing this story, I was very proud of the mayor for not saying, "Do you know who I am?"
I would not do that.
Anyway, it was, that was, that was my experience in Rockledge tonight. Also, on the 27th, along with Courtney and a bunch of other people, I was at Dorothy Huchel's opening of her Senate office in downtown Kokoa in the Porcher House, so that was pretty neat. She's a great lady. She's going to be representing half of Brevard County as our state senator. She was the mayor of Port Orange. She understands local government, so she's a great ally for cities, and I think it's great that she's here, and we have a very good relationship with her. I've known her for a long time, and Courtney's worked with her, so it's, it's all going to be good. On the 21st, after our council meeting the next day, I was at the Florida Minnesota Pension Trust Fund meeting, and I also attended the Florida League of Cities Board meeting on the 22nd. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report. So move on to Agenda Item Six, City Manager Report, pardon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had an eye appointment, so my eyes are dilated, so I'm having a hard time reading, but I'm going to try. We have a grand opening for the Community Garden Saturday, October 7th. Hopefully, it's not going to be pouring down rain. This is, we've had it canceled already for hurricane activity, but we're going to try. We do have food trucks coming, live music, and, you know, it's, it should be a lot of fun. There's an ad going through Facebook right now promoting that event, so hopefully we'll get a good attendance. And then, of course, the next day is the Satellite Beach Lions Club Pancake Breakfast, which is my favorite event ever, and that's from 8 to 12, and tickets are $5. You can get those tickets from Lions Club members, or you can just go up and pay at the door, which sometimes you do. I do have a correction to make in my report. The Lagoon Fest Volkswagen Show is at the DRS Center, but it's Sunday, October 15th, from 8 to 4, and the event is free. Phil and Brenda Klein, Phil is one of our Public Works employees, they have been doing this event for three, three years now, and they have so far raised over $10,000 and donated that to the Brevard Zoo for Lagoon Restoration, which I think is pretty incredible. They're actually going to be applying for their 501(c)(3) next year, which will even make their efforts even easier or, you know, better. So I encourage you all to attend that. We will be advertising that on Facebook coming up pretty soon. We went through the flooding already, so I don't need to elaborate on that anymore. I received a congratulatory letter from Blaze Tredis, Tredis?
Tredis.
Tredis, who's our public defender, 18th Judicial Court for Police Chief Jeff Pearson, for receiving his award for his hard work and leadership, and that he received that award with the Public Service Awards a couple weeks ago with, along with Linda Harlow, and she got an administrative award. We're going to give an update on debris. Katrina, did you want to?
I can do that. I just wanted to add something to the Volkswagen thing. Phil had asked me to pass on that the Friday before the event, they're hosting a pre-event get-together at, or is it Saturday before the event? I'm sorry. The pre at Papa Gallows. Papa Gallows is donating 15% of that evening's, whatever they make that name, I guess, to the relief effort in Puerto Rico. And instead of the lagoon this year, the, whatever they raise at the car show is going to go toward the Puerto Rican relief effort as well. So, you know, if you can make it there, you know, you're allowed to see it. And Phil does this, and a lot of our guys help him do that car show, so it's really kind of a group effort on their, on their part, so.
It's my birthday.
But debris cleanup, the only area in the city right now that still has not been done with the first pass is the area between Cassia and Sherwood. Cassia is about cleaned up. I think there's a couple piles left. Cinnamon was being picked up today. The western portion of the area, of that area, was being picked up by Green Thumb. So we're squeezing, we're slowly squeezing it out, and hopefully by at least the beginning to middle of next week, we'll have it completely taken care of for the first pass, and then we're going to turn it over to the county.
To do the second pass, yeah.
You know, so, yeah, it's been, it's been another one of those years where, you know, you'd have to, it has to be a group effort, because if we waited on the county, and I, we do a lot of work with the counties, so I can't, you know, yell too much, but I know they're under the gun as well, but, yeah, we'd be waiting a long time.
The county's encountering the same issues that the rest of the state has in terms of debris cleanup with contractors, not being able to hold them, the subcontractors, you know, them moving to the next highest bidder. So unfortunately, FEMA bidding requirements require you to keep that price, and you can't really go any higher than that. So if you can't get the contractors there, you can't get the contractors there. We were, this is the second time that we've had to go out and just eat it and just get it cleaned up, and that's Public Works and then also Addin Green Thumb, which has been a great contractor. We've gotten numerous compliments on that contractor, so. So we should be done soon. The one, I, I have to say, we have received very few complaints this week, this time around, so we learned to just get it done with, with ourselves and not wait around for the county. I included in my report solid waste charges, the update, you know, those go up with the CIP index every year. And then I wanted to let you know that next week I will be out of the state with Suzanne into Washington DC with the League of Cities. I will let you know by email who will be acting while I'm gone, and, and we're only, I'm only going to be gone from Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then I'll be back.
Do we have an action item?
I'll make a motion to approve the levy of the Brevard County solid waste charges for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017 through September 30th of 18.
I'm motioning, Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Because it is an action item, open up the public comment on solid waste for Brevard County. Are there any back at council for the discussion? Are there no more?
Councilman Bryan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osborn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Any further important comment? Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to Agenda Item Seven, Discuss Take Action on Emergency Purchase for an Air Condition Replacement at the David R. Schechter Community Center. Alan?
Come on, Alan.
Just to give you an introduction, we had, how much budgeted? $160,000 budgeted for next year in the CIP for the replacement of this unit, and with the power failures and so on, we're now having to do that early as an emergency replacement. You know what houses this community center, so it's not very comfortable right now, and we need to, we need to get that done.
Good evening. Before you this evening is, they used to call me $5,000 lady, they don't call me that anymore. The, the chiller at the Schechter Center is 15 years old. At about, I want to say 13 years old, we started having problems with it. You know, we had problems with it here and there over, over time, but the problems became more and more expensive, to the point now where we're spending almost $5,000 every other month or every third month to recharge, to repair a barrel that has leaking cylinders in it, the refrigerant is leaking out of, and it's not the new refrigerant, it's the old refrigerant. And if you're familiar with the refrigerants, the old refrigerant is very, very, very expensive. R22? R22, yes, sir. So that's why it's costing us so much money. So we, I had actually had it programmed into the, the CIP for next year for, I think I had $163,000 programmed in for the replacement of that chiller. We talked to Train, who went through the US Communities bid process. They used that, they worked with the Brevard County Schools, and that's how Brevard County Schools acquired a lot of it, most of, or all of their equipment. So they were able to get us a price, as you can see, of $93,000. And then the integration portion of it would be an additional $5,000, 48, 49, 86, basically There is a cooling tower included in the bid, however, in speaking with the, the installer or potential installer, that cooling tower was oversized for that, for that spot. It's basically twice the size of the one that's there now, so it wouldn't fit. We'd have to do some modifications, which would cost us much more money. So in speaking with them, they said that we could push the cooling tower out for a year, so we could make that work next year and get a proper cooling tower or rebuild the one that we have and basically make it brand-new. So that's something that we're going to be exploring. So I guess the, the total that we're looking at now is the 93 or the $98,504 for the chiller and the integration. The installation is, in speaking amongst ourselves, we thought it might be a little expensive, but as we looked, you know, at the, what they were providing, they have to modify the, the door to get the chiller in. It's a three-foot door, they'll have to make it a six-foot door to, just to get the chiller in. It's a five-day process. We'll have to shut the building down AC-wise for that, for that period of time. It'll have to be repiped, a new pad poured, built and poured inside the, the room that it's in now. So there is a lot of work that's going into this. Is it worth $67,000? I don't know. I'm going to call around and see. I just, I just received this this evening, that's why I wasn't able to bet it. But I do know that I've worked with Merritt Island Air for 20 years plus, and I know them to be fair and honest, and I, I don't think that they would be giving us a price that wasn't, wasn't fair. So that being said, like I said, I'm going to get ahold of Train tomorrow and find out if they deal with somebody in, you know, like Orange County or something, and see if we can get a, a better price. I just...
So, question to you. So it's approximately 98 plus 67.
What about the 25 for the temporary chiller?
Well, the temporary chiller, we, we may, if we shut the building down for five days, we won't need that temporary chiller.
Okay.
So, back to my question, so it's approximately the 98, and the 67 is the labor?
67 is the, the labor, the...
The installation, yeah.
The equipment and everything that it takes to do that. To do that. Installation, piping.
Putting a new concrete pad down, modifying the door, stuff like that.
Let me ask this question, just because I hate coming back next year to do something breaks, and then it costs you 20% more to do it. Do we have the funds to do the other unit now?
Well, we have reserves, which is what we're going to use with this, but...
I, I spoke with Merritt Island Air.
Yeah, I asked the same question, Mayor, and, you know, but...
And what he told me was that, you know, we could rebuild it for half the price, and we don't need to do it right now because it's, he figured if we were going to do it all, we might as well do it all at the same time, but because of the situation we have with the oversized unit, we'd have to go out and try to find another unit that, you know, may not be on the community's bid, so we'd have to go out to bid on that, or, you know... that, you know, may not be on the community's bid, so we'd have to go out to bid on that, or, you know. So there may be some complications involved in that. But in that conversation, he said, you know, simply rebuild it for half price and it would be, like, you'd get a warranty, you'd get, it'd be like a brand new cooling tower. So.
So here's another part of my question then. We're going to have to shut something down for a little bit because I just don't see where you spend $25,000 to keep it cool for 20 days or whatever it is. You asked me how long it took to redo that tower, to rebuild it. The only reason is I just hate to piecemeal something together that you do it, because you're going to have to shut it down again when they do that. Correct?
That's, yeah, that's quite possible.
And is it compatible? I mean, it's too big or, you know, I just want to make sure that all the units work and the project is done because I just have a hard time believing that it's cheaper next year to do something. Just don't see that in business, so just a thought.
So we have two chillers. One of them is down.
We have, we have one. I keep calling it the chiller, it's a cooling tower, it's outside that has the water in it that runs the, that runs through the chiller.
Okay, so we're going to replace that cooling tower for $63,000?
We, we're not going to do that now. We were going to.
We have a chiller and a cooling tower. We're going to replace the chiller.
Okay, and the chiller is, the chiller is the $63,000.
Right.
The $67,000 is what it's going to cost to install it. When you looked at the $160,000 that was in the 2018 budget, was that for the chiller and the tower?
No.
So, so we're only $5,000 over, which you were originally putting in the budget for next year anyway.
Correct.
Correct?
But, yeah, without the install, I had no idea that the install would be that costly to be additional.
But we're still at $165,000 and you budgeted $160,000?
For the equipment.
For the equipment.
For the equipment.
And that was the chiller and the cooling tower, is what you were budgeting for?
No, I budgeted because when I initially, this, I started this conversation five years ago with Merritt Island Air because I knew that at some point we were going to have to have a new chiller because they don't last forever. So I had, I started this conversation with them like five years ago. And T at that time told me a high figure would be at $175,000 just for the chiller. So I said, it's a high figure, I'm going to hedge my bet and I'm going to say $163,000. And that's where I put it in the budget. I don't know why I pulled $163,000 out, but I, I was pretty good, you know, looking at the number now. But, you know, I had no idea.
We need to rebuild the cooling tower. We need to replace it or rebuild it at some point, just not right now. So if we could, if you would like, what we need to do is get your permission to first override the bid requirements. The second thing we need permission for is to move forward with the chiller and we were, we were going to ask you for $180,000 because there's always something that goes wrong, it's like renovating your house. And then if we have a cooling tower in here with a cost of $63,000, we could, you could also authorize us up to $100,000?
You know, I don't think that it would cost, well, I don't know about the installation.
Right, and that's so.
Because they have to have a crane.
If we, if we feel that it's a good investment to do right now. The problem is, is if, you know, with the cooling tower, we don't really have to do it right now, even though it would be great because we're shut down and so on, but we haven't gone out to bid for it. It's not, you know what I mean, like emergency bids are for things you have to do today and that's why we're a little uncomfortable. If we don't have to do it today, it'd be nice to be able to go out to bid later and get these things done competitively.
What kind of timeframe were you looking at if we have to bid it out and then redo it? How long would we be shut down for that process?
For the cooling tower? You know, I'm not sure I'd have to talk to, you know, Merritt Island Air again about that. But I, he did tell me, one, that it would be the same as a branding tower. Two, you wouldn't have the expense of having to hire a crane to put it up there. So it would be basically half the cost of what you, you know, you have quoted here for a new one.
So is that 63, the new one?
It's 63, it's the new one.
So we'd be looking at an additional 30, 31?
Right, plus the integration, the $5,000 for the integration that you wouldn't need to, or the VFD that you wouldn't need to have because you already have on the menu.
So rebuilding is half.
Can't we just move it all amount?
Yeah, I mean, rebuilding is half. We're going to save money because you don't need a crane and all that.
Well, that's what I was going to say, if that's something you want us to review now and we can, we can go ahead and do that if you can, we just need your authorization to spend up to that amount.
So you're talking about another $30,000 on top of the $180,000?
Possibly.
I would, I would give, more than that. We don't know what the installation is.
So if we said 220, up to 220, that's for the whole wall of wax. If you come back and say, you know, we're just going to do this and we're not going to do that because it's not beneficial. We at least have given you the way to, you know, to look at it. If you can bargain and price it now so we only have to shut down once, to get it all done at once.
If we don't have to shut down later, then staff would prefer to bid it, if that's.
Yeah, I mean.
But if we do have to shut down twice, then we understand.
Revenue from the programs that are out there, we're also inconveniencing our residents twice.
Right. Okay, I, yeah, I can, I can definitely see if that, that's a doable thing.
We apologize, we had to do this very fast.
Hey, things break. Okay, let me open up for public comment on this Agenda Item. Floor is open. Here are no public comment?
So before we make a.
I just have a question. Is there a lead time on getting the equipment?
Yeah, that's why I say if, if we give them the go-ahead today, we probably won't have any work started before late November, early December.
I was going to, I was going to say that because where I'm working right now, I'm replacing with Train for facilities with new HVAC systems. And, and you're right, I know right now they're talking anywhere from 60, 90, 100-day lead time to get the equipment here. So even though we say we're going to approve this tonight, it's not like they're going to start putting air conditioning in tomorrow. There's going to.
What power outage system?
So there's going to be some serious lead time. That's why I want to make sure everybody understood that because you're right, this is not going to happen tomorrow.
I'm probably working with the same guy you're working with at Train.
Well, and that, my, my second thing was is I know that the Train guy seems to provide this equipment, but they usually, there's five or six other people other than like Merritt Island. I know Florida Mechanical and some other that are out there. I don't know, I know we're trying to do this as an emergency, but is there anybody else that could possibly do this work? Or is this pretty much it? I mean, as far as putting it out for bids or anything.
That's what we're, we're looking for.
I'm going to explore that. The only reason I brought this to you tonight is because, because I work with Merritt Island Air all the time.
Right.
They're the ones that put the initial equipment in, so.
At least you have a ballpark. They gave you a.
And I do appreciate that. I mean, that's, that is very important to tell us what ballpark, and I definitely agree with that.
And I'm going to call Train tomorrow and see who else they work with because it has to be Train equipment. You know, we can't, we can't take another piece of equipment and try to put it in there because the rest of the system is Train and it's all part of a, you know, ice storage system. So it has to be a Train chiller.
And from a commercial point of view, I wouldn't have that argument anyways. I, they stand behind their equipment, especially in industrial stuff, really well. We had an incident where four years later, they actually had an interior fan blade issue and they came out and gave us a whole brand-new unit five years later at their cost, no cost out there. So the equipment, I wholly agree with, that Train equipment is good equipment. I just, you know, it's an awful lot of money and, you know, you're, I'm sure there'll be somebody who'll say, do we make sure we got the best deal for it, even though I know it's an emergency situation? I just want to make sure that we feel good that, I wouldn't want somebody else to come in and say they'll do it for half that price, you know what I mean? Because that would not look good on any of us.
We get nervous anytime we do anything without a bid, so.
Oh, absolutely, and.
So we start checking around and I think we've got a pretty good handle on the equipment side of it. But like I said, you know, Alan's going to start checking around to other places that, you know, have the equipment installed to see how, what that, what that looks like.
Will you bring it back to us and let us know what you come up with? Or are you just asking for us to give you like a blanket thing and say, we'll just spend it? And if you, can you let us know if you come up with a cheaper?
An up to.
Yeah, an up to, right, so.
Put to that.
And that's just.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to, so is the air not working right now?
It's working. Yeah, we, I, we just had them come in, they opened up the chiller barrel, they fixed 30 leaks, closed it back up and they recharged it.
Oh, I, I'm so sorry.
And flooded.
So now it's working again. It's making ice out of it every day. So, so far.
It's either extremely cold or hot.
Something to deal with.
Cold is way better for the day.
Yeah. Do I, do I have a motion?
Well, let me, before we make a motion, the motion needs to include we're going to override the bid process and we're looking for up to $220,000. Is that what it needs to be?
I think that's what I want.
Did we, the equipment itself, we checked through a piggyback, are we piggybacking off a particular contract?
It's through the US Commodities Bid.
Okay, so we're piggybacking the equipment off that bid?
Yeah, US Communities and Train is a member and they have the contract number and their number and that's how they purchase equipment for Brevard County Schools, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve up to $220,000 to override the bid process and piggyback on a contract with Train on the equipment that we need. And this includes insulation also.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Further discussion from council? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Alan, thank you, and you'll report those as soon as you.
Yeah, and, and please, you know, be assured that I'm, I'm going to, you know, try to get this number down as best I can. You know, I just, when you go with somebody you don't know, you, you're always kind of leery, you know. Somebody comes out and says, oh, yeah, I can do it for 50 grand. You know, I just want to make sure we get the right, the right.
And I agree. I, I think, and just going along with I, so make sure we do due diligence that we know that you did the homework and that you are happy with who we're going to get and we all feel confident. I think that's where we're going.
We also know that we at least have this stuff on order.
We can. Oh, yeah, the equipment, we'll, we'll take care of the equipment right away. But the installation part, we have a little time there because if we don't have the equipment, they can't install it.
All right, okay. Alan, thank you very much. Courtney, staff, thank you on this. Moving on to Agenda Number 8. Discuss take action on interlocal agreement with Brevard County. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the same interlocal agreement the CRA has already approved. We just felt that the city should approve it as well. This agreement is with Brevard County to basically, it was in their effort to reduce some of the costs of the CRAs and I guess make them more accountable. Since our CRA is, is ending and we agreed to, we just did a plan amendment to end it a year early, this agreement basically just solidifies everything we're doing in the plan and moves forward. So I am getting some questions from one of the county commissioners why we didn't agree with the internal audit requirements that they wanted in the agreement. And I responded that they see it, the city's ending our CRA in two years with incredibly very specific ways of spending the money outlined in the plans. I don't see a need for it to internal audit and be subject to a political attack later when, that's exactly why they're putting it in there.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. Motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Discussion from council? Here are none. Open this up for public comment on Agenda Item 8. There are no public comment. Back to council. Any further? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 9. Discuss take action on Ordinance 1145.
Ordinance number 1145. In ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-253, computation of travel reimbursement for tipping increased to 20%. Providing for severability, providing for conflict clause, and providing effective date. It's the first reading, Ordinance number 1145.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1145 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Discussion from council?
Yeah, the only discussion I have is I'm all in favor of increasing the tip to 20%, but, you know.
Up to.
Are it up to 20%? Are the, are the meal allowances for what we get, are those state guidelines? I mean, when are those going to go up?
We tried, we actually asked the question.
Try and go someplace when you're staying at a hotel at a conference and get a $6 or $8 breakfast.
Yeah, but Florida League of Cities, the breakfasts were $24.95, it was the cheapest you had.
I mean, go get lunch for like 15 bucks.
Yeah, so, but we're.
All the dinner, not even.
But on that, Jim, we're, come under state law, guidance, okay.
Okay. How do we, how do we go about lobbying to get that?
Let me, let's work on this. Okay, I, any further discussion? At this time, open up for pub, public, excuse me, comment on Agenda Item 9. Here are none, back to council. Further? Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 10. Discuss take action to the existing interlocal agreement with Brevard County. Restore stormwater education outreach. Alan?
Good evening. This one's not going to cost near as much.
He used to call him 5,000.
Yeah, right.
Now we call him 200,000.
Back in November when we entered into the BMAP for the stormwater, part of that, a component of that was public education. And in conversations with the county and meetings, many of the meetings that we went to, we all became pretty close and decided to form a consortium to hire somebody to provide education so that we would get credits through the state for our stormwater effort. So the county took the lead on that and basically worked out a pretty good deal with what was Liv Blue at that time, now Blue Light, I think. So, but it had never been renegotiated since 2011. So this year they want to go out and RFP for a new, maybe not new, just RFP the education component to, to see if they can maybe cut costs or something. So, because I guess it's costing a little bit. So now they want, they came up with an amendment for the cost of the program for us. It's using the 2014 census numbers as opposed to the original agreement, which was 2009 numbers. So our cost is going up by $63.50 because our population in, you know, through those two census years actually went down. I don't know how that worked out, but it did. So that is the first agreement, which also points out that this, the timetable is, is only good through April 30th of 2018 because they're going out to bid but didn't want to lose the education component in that, that time period. So they're keeping the old company until they, they choose a new company. And all of the, whatever we pay for deliverables, those points or those credits will be passed on to the next, the next company or the same company if that, if that's the case. There's also an Amendment 2, which basically covers the same thing. But it, the only thing that changes there was that they provided for a, in the initial amendment, they wanted a nonprofit organization. I guess it went to the county commission and they wanted to add a for-profit company that also bid for the, the job. So that's what Amendment 2. for-profit company that also bid for the, the job. So, that's what amendment two has in it.
Very confusing to me. All legalese, shall I have Mr. Beetle handles?
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the amendments to the interlocal agreement for stormwater education and outreach to include a contribution increase of sixty-three dollars and fifty, fifty cents based on two thousand fourteen population data.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. At this time, open up agenda item ten for public comment. Hearing no public comment. Back to council. Further, council? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Alan. Moving on to agenda item eleven, which is the city, our proposed, um, agenda for the eighteenth of October. And you're not there.
I will not be there.
Okay.
Correct.
There's any additions to this, or anything you need on, again, see Courtney?
Um, I just wanted, I forgot to let you know under my report that, uh, we do, on the eighteenth, we have the water utility, um, coming to present their work that they're doing in the community, 'cause we keep getting breaks and boil water notices, and we wanted to follow up with them to figure out what their plans are for infrastructure replacement. Um, the county, after the not being able to flush our toilet for two weeks and still now we're back on that restriction, um, I met with the county manager, uh, last Monday to talk about what they're doing, um, and, and kinda continued a conversation. And, um, this time, we have a county manager, um, he's very, um, receptive to solving this problem. Um, and so, the county utility is putting together a plan of, some options for us on how we could solve this issue, um, of, you know, discharges into the canals. And I'll be meeting with them, um, I believe, the week of the sixteenth to go over those. On the October twentieth, they'll be making a presentation to the Citizens Oversight Committee for the Lagoon Act about that, specific, specific subject. So, I'll be putting that on Facebook. It'll be a, probably a very lively meeting, given the passion people have about not putting discharging into the lagoon. Um, unfortunately, uh, you know, when you meet with them, you realize that they do, really do everything they can not to do that. Um, and a lot of, a lot of it is not because of population growth or anything like that. It's because of rainwater infiltrating the cracks in the pipes, and we have a lot of cracks in the pipes because we're built on sand. And just like, you know, we, we have issues with our drainage pipes, they have the same issues with theirs. So, I wanted to let you know that. And then on the nineteenth of October, I'll be working with Dr. Lindeman and Zach, Zachary Echols, who's our intern, making a presentation of RedFIT and the Gleason Auditorium on our city sustainability initiatives. And then Dr. Lindeman is gonna be doing, um, another half of the presentation on statewide initiatives throughout the state. But we're, we've been highlighted for that specific, um, event, so...
On the nineteenth Thursday?
Well...
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, any other items in need for the agenda? Please let Courtney know. Moving on to agenda item twelve, appointments to boards. Um, before we start here, I have a question. Are these for Mike Chase and Donnie? We're gonna reappoint, if we reappoint Mike, Mark, Mike Chase, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's like for eight months. Seven twenty-four eighteen, is that a typo?
No, this is their existing term on the firefighters and police pension board. So, in other words, I, I basically tried to let you know which board members have served on the, on each respective pension board and their existing term. If you go down to the current board vacancies, you'll see that, um, former member, Spiegelhalter's term, um, you know, would end on January ninth of two thousand twenty. So, you'll need to either determine whether you want to appoint somebody on the firefighters and police and also, uh, you know, appoint somebody on the general employees from the existing members, or you can, um, advertise to seek applications for future interviews.
I, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Bill Spiegelhalter served on firefighter and general employee as, for two boards, so he served on one of them.
Right, but Mike Chase is, is on the board right now, right? Or is he an option?
He's on a firefighter and pension.
Okay.
So, you could have the option to put him on general employee. And then you could choose one of the general employee people to serve on the firefighter.
So, what we can do is...
That's why she gave you that information.
We can, we can take, we can take Mike and put Mike as a board member on the general employees, and we can take Donnie and put him as a board member on the firefighter and police pension board, um, because we've gotta fill two seats, basically. Bill sat on two different boards.
Right, so Mike would sit on two different boards and Donnie would sit on two different boards?
Exactly.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out why. Thank you. Okay. So, we have that, and we have Nancy Donahue on the beautification, so motions?
So moved. So moved, we're gonna move Mike to, now, we're gonna move Mike to the general employees with a term ending one-nine-two-zero-twenty, and we're gonna move Donnie to the police and firefighters with a term ending one-nine-two-zero-twenty. Is that correct, Lenore?
Yes.
Yes.
And pick up Nancy, too. Go ahead. I'll second you.
And they're gonna still serve on their existing...
And they're still gonna...
Right.
Got that.
Pick up Nancy, too, Don, and I'll second. And, uh, and we will appoint Nancy to the recreation board. No, beautification. Or beautification board, I'm sorry.
I have a, a, a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Breimer. Yeah. Further discussion?
Just one request about Bill.
Yeah. Jim, with, okay?
The council floor.
Are we, Jim, you're okay with it?
Correct. So, they're filling in Bill's old seat, though, as a council floor seat.
Oh, okay. No, that's... We good?
Yeah.
Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item thirteen, improvements of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September twentieth regular city council meeting.
That's submitted?
Yes, submitted.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Further discussion? Hearing none. Lenore?
Councilman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. And our next meeting, Steve, you...
I will not, I'll not be here.